Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the March tenth, two thousand three meeting of the Haltum City Council. We welcome not only those of you who are here in the audience, but also those who are watching the live telecast of our council meeting tonight, and those who will be watching replays of it over the next couple of weeks. We appreciate everyone's interest in the business that is conducted here in Haltum City, and we appreciate your attendance here tonight, as well as your attention to the telecast. If you will, stand with me at this time for the invocation and pledge of allegiance led by Councilmember David Avery.
Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for this day you have given us, you have so graciously given us. I ask for your blessing upon this meeting as we discuss the business of our city. May we, as a council, be fair and just in our decision and actions here tonight. I pray that we conduct ourselves in a way that would be pleasing to you. I ask these things in the name of thy son, amen.
Item number one on our agenda tonight is a presentation to Chris Zarate, our utility
billing manager. And Mr. Torres, I believe you're going to introduce this item.
Well, what I'd like to do, Mayor, is maybe explain this item a little bit for those of you who may not know what this is all about. We have an item that's going to come up later on the agenda this evening, and it's item number seven pertaining to the creation of an ordinance that establishes our fees. And what this does is it brings all the various fees and charges that the city assesses into one document, and it makes it easier for us to review periodically. It makes it easier for the citizens when they come in, they want to see, you know, what we're charging for certain things. It just condenses it in such a way that makes it a little more user-friendly. And up till now, the city of Haltum City has not had this done. So, as you can imagine, fees have been created in many different ordinances and locations, and there were many fees that had been assessed that were, in fact, never authorized, you know, by this body. So, it puts everything together, and it took months and months of work. And we didn't really have a person on staff that was responsible for that. So, we had to, we were looking for someone out there amongst our employees that was capable of taking on such a large project and doing a good job with it. And the individual that's being recognized tonight is Chris Zarate, who works in our utility billing office. And Chris is here with us tonight, and the mayor's going to present a little proclamation to her. But we just wanted you to understand what this is all about, that it's a document that's going to help us all in the years to come, and it's something that Chris worked very, very hard on. I know firsthand all the frustration that she went through. So, we do thank you, Chris, for that.
And Chris, we do appreciate the efforts of all of our employees who go above and beyond the job description and take on projects of this size. I know this took a lot of time and effort on your part, and we sincerely appreciate it. I want to present you with this proclamation presented to Chris Zarate. Whereas the quality of life in a community is enriched by the efforts of individuals, and whereas Chris Zarate, Haltum City Utility Billing Manager, took on the job of coordinating with all the city department directors to update a new fee schedule for the city, and whereas the task took many hours of combining all the city fees and organizing them into one centralized place, and whereas this job was not part of her regular duties or her normal responsibilities, but was taken on by Chris without any reservation, in wholehearted support for the good of the community. Now therefore, I Calvin White, Mayor of the city of Haltum City, on behalf of the council, do hereby proclaim Chris Zarate as an outstanding employee and recognize her for her continued efforts on behalf of the citizens of our community. So, thank you very much. And we have a token here. Your colleagues would like to make this presentation to you, and if you would, if you'd like to open that, and would be happy for you to make any comments you'd like, if you would.
Oh, my gosh. I wasn't expecting this, that was for sure. Well, I sincerely appreciate you for the recognition. It's not often that somebody gets a chance to speak before you, and I just wanted you to know how much I do appreciate you taking the time to recognize me. I worked a lot of many, well, I worked a lot of hard, long hours on this, and it's nice to be appreciated, and I thank you very much.
Thank you. But just before you leave, and Councilmember Williams has a comment, I believe.
Ms. Zarate, I'd like to thank you for your efforts that you're here for the city. And if anybody hasn't been down here, when you walk in the front door of City Hall, the first thing you see is the billing department, and I don't know how she does it, how she has them on command, but they are a very happy-go-lucky bunch when they're in there, and they do an excellent job. And I appreciate the work that you and your department heads do and the people that work for you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Item number two is a presentation also to be made by our Public Information Officer, Fran Burns, and it is the two thousand three Images of Haltum City Photo Contest Winners. Ms. Burns?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm happy to be here tonight for the fifteenth time to give out the awards for our Images of Haltum City Photo Contest. This year, we had a record number, two hundred and eighty-seven entries, and all of them, I hope you got to see the display. All the entries were on display at the Haltum City Public Library, and the comments this year were that the quality was so, it keeps going up every single year. Of course, as I said, it was, the contest is fifteen years old. It was begun in nineteen eighty-nine, and it began as a project of the Beautification Board, but this year it was turned over to Public Information. And it was also sponsored this year by the Haltum City News, who published the photos today, so I hope you got to see your weekly newspaper. I want to thank the library for allowing us to display the photos, and our judges, Gary Blocker, Kaz DeLeo, and Dick Hodgson, and also to David Soriano for taping and editing the judging to be shown on HCTV, and that's always a very interesting program. So, now to the winners. I'd like to start out with the one category where we offer no prize money, but we do offer recognition that's on the road. And I have to give credit to Jeff Grimm of Trinity High School, who encourages his students to enter this contest every year. We get some wonderful entries from these high school kids. And I'm going to call out the names of the on-the-road winners, and if they're here, I hope some of them are, please come forward. First of all, first place for color on the road goes to Courtney Moffett, and she did call this week and say she wasn't going to be able to make it, but we congratulate her. Honorable mention for color on the road goes to Valerie Harris. I don't think she's here this evening either. We'll make sure they get their certificates. First place, black and white on the road, Ryan Gladstone, and he is here. And Ryan, thank you for entering. Let me, I've got to, I hate to do this, but I have to give them back their photographs now. So, Ryan took this lovely photo of a sailboat. I'm not even sure how he did this. The technique is to get that effect, but it's really a beautiful photo. Honorable mention on the road in black and white goes to Joel Dierdorf, and I don't think he's here either, but let me show you his photograph. And I think he and Ryan might have shared the same technique because it's black and white, and it's a really lovely picture of snow in branches. Okay, I'll make sure he gets his certificate. Now, actually, the big winner, the on-the-show, on-the-road, excuse me, best-of-show photograph earns two hundred and fifty dollars, and this year's winner is Kathy Zaragoza, and she is here this evening, and we'd like her to come forward. This is her photograph. But this is one that we get to keep, and we'll put this on display along with the other photographs from the other years in the hall, in City Hall. Congratulations to you. And there's your money. Keep up the good work. All right. The next category is animals, and these next pictures have to be taken in Haltum City to be eligible to win. And first place for animals is Diana Legisar. I hope I'm saying that correctly. And she wins seventy-five dollars. She has a beautiful picture of some birds in a window. That's Diana. Wonderful. Beautiful picture. Thank you. Kathy, I hope you're not too comfortable, because she also placed honorable mention in animals, and I don't know if you guys saw this out in the hallway, but it's really cute. How did you get your dog to stay still for that?
Do what?
How did you train your dog to?
We had a lot of tries before he did that.
Good job. All right. Next category is people and their activities, and again, these pictures need to be taken in Haltum City. This goes to Taylor Anderson, first place, and he wins seventy-five dollars, and I don't think he's here tonight either, but here's this picture. It's a really neat picture of a little boy playing in the snow. Make sure he gets that. And Kathy Zaragoza, again, took honorable mention for people and their activities. And really, it's amazing that, I don't think any photographer has taken three prizes in a single contest, and she's just good at it. We appreciate your participation. Next category is Haltum City Scenes, and this was swept by one of our local photographers. And I know you know Travis Royal, and he's, he shows up everywhere for our events, and we just appreciate him doing that, but he's also a wonderful photographer. And if you ever want to learn how to do some digital photography, which is coming on now, as opposed to the old traditional film and developing, he can let you know about that, and he wins seventy-five dollars also for that photograph. But then look at this. This is honorable mention, same category, and we're just amazed by the color in this, and you're just going to have to show us how.
I've been using a digital camera since June of last year, so I'm an expert.
And the last, but not least, is our Proud and Progressive Photom, and this is a photograph that the judge has taken into consideration all of the photographs that are taken in Haltum City and looked for one that they think kind of exemplifies the city and is a high-quality photograph as well. And considering all the building that's going on this year and has been going on for the past several months, they were drawn to a photograph of some new construction. So, this photograph was taken by Kelly Lewis, and she's another student from Trinity High School. And here she is. All right, I'm glad you're here, Kelly. Your photograph, your certificate, and your seventy-five dollars. And we might be calling on you to borrow that back from you sometime during the year. I hope that's all right. Okay. Well, thank you very much for your time, and we just had a really great event this year. Look forward to next year.
Thank you, Ms. Burns, and to all of you who entered pictures in the contest, to those of you who were winners tonight and recognized, our congratulations. I try to do a little photography every once in a while, but I can't do anywhere near what y'all do. I stand in awe of people that can take a camera, catch the right moment at the right time with the right angle of the sun, and just make these kind of masterpieces. So, again, congratulations to all of you. We move now, yes, Councilmember Fowler.
I have a question, Mayor, for Ms. Burns. You were here when it originally, I guess, the first contest took place fifteen years ago. How many entries did we have this year versus, how much has it grown? I know we had an excessive.
We started with thirty-six photographs, and each year we've gotten more, and two hundred and eighty-seven this year.
So, you started your original year, the first year of the premier was thirty-six photographs, and you had two hundred and eighty-seven entries this year. That's great. Thank you, Fran. Thanks for all y'all's hard work.
We move now to the consent agenda, and if you're looking at your agenda, you will notice we have listed items three, four, five, and six, and we're adding items seven and eight to the consent agenda. And after we take action on that, we have some comments to make on a couple of these for your information, because they represent some very significant progress here in Haltum City. So, I'm in line for a motion now on the consent agenda consisting of items three, four, five, six, seven, and eight. Councilmember Avery?
Mayor, I make a motion, we approve the consent agenda.
Councilmember Markham? Have a motion, a second, to any discussion. If you will, register your vote, and that passes by unanimous vote. Mr. Torres, would you like to make any comments on item five and seven while Mr. Elfrinck is coming up to give us some further details on these two items? They're pretty exciting.
Yeah, actually, I'm going to defer item number five to Pat's comments, because it's a project that was spearheaded through the Finance Department, and he's probably best to speak on it.
Thank you, Mr. Torres. About a year ago, the city added to its roster of staffing a purchasing agent, a dedicated position, so that we were in line with the professionally managed cities of our size in this area and also throughout the nation. What this did, it complied with the recommendations for a number of years also from our outside independent auditors, that we needed to address this issue with a greater level of emphasis and stop relying on all of our different department heads, of which there are about eleven, relying on each of those individuals to be experts in the purchasing field, which is quite a complicated, almost legalistic field nowadays. And it has grown today into a modern profession with the Internet and all of the different state and local and school district co-ops that we have. It's an extremely complicated field, and one, though, that is ripe for efficiencies. So, as a result of having now, for the past year, a dedicated purchasing agent position, what was needed then was to transform our existing purchasing policies, our manual, into one that recognized a centralized purchasing function and not the decentralized function that we had before, where each department head played a role in buying police cars or fire trucks or gravel and sand, and we focused that all on one person. In doing so, we did a very complete review of our old manual. We sent that manual to each of our department heads for their input and their review. We sent it to our attorneys for their review. The city manager and myself and our purchasing agent spent many hours reviewing the document meticulously and looking at all the different recommendations. And what you have here tonight is one, a document that not only addresses the issues related to centralization of this function, but it also addresses some concerns in a proactive manner before a calamity occurred that we had to address it in a reactive manner. An example of which I have read in the paper in the last year, some cities throughout in the state have had problems with credit card use by their employees. This new policy, for instance, creates a credit card policy that is rather stringent and rather tight, and it lets our employees know the proper methods with which to handle a city credit card if they are entrusted with having one. Another thing that we corrected in this policy is it had its own conflict of interest rules. Unfortunately, those conflict of interest rules conflicted directly with our own ethics policy that was passed about two years ago by this body. So, we threw out what was in the policy manual, and we incorporated in the very carefully-written ethics ordinance that this body elected to hold themselves up to. Those are just a few examples of the many changes that have been made to improve the process, make it more efficient, make it more restrictive, so that we are accounting for the taxpayers' money that we are spending. And I'll just say that we have a listing of the, I think it's about twenty-two major issues that were addressed in this new policy on the cover letter, and if any of the council members have a question about any of these items, we'd be glad to try and respond at this time.
Any questions by members of the council? Councilmember Fowler?
Mr. Elfrinck, this, I know y'all have taken into consideration that all the state, I know the state stepped in now and done a lot of the different purchasing things, and I just want to make sure that the public's aware that this follows not only our standards but state standard for purchasing.
Thank you for pointing that out, of course. As the rule-making hierarchy goes, the highest standard, of course, would be perhaps federal law and then state law, and then if there is a county law that applies to it, but I don't think there is, but actually, then it's the local municipal law that we all try to intermesh together so that nothing conflicts with the other, because if there is a conflict, the highest of those bodies would govern. But we've tried to incorporate that throughout. That was one of the reasons for the very intensive review that our attorneys gave it.
And I appreciate that. I think that's a credit to our staff, or is currently trying to do a lot of these things, and I'm sure that with two or three things brought up tonight, between purchasing and codification, some different things that y'all have worked on, I know it's going to make it a lot more simple for all the residents to come in on fee schedules and different things, and I think we've needed that for years and years, and I appreciate y'all taking the time to do that.
I've mentioned this with the city manager, and I believe as we gain the capability of doing so, and when this document is put into its absolute final form without this editing that shows what was taken out and what was put in, we plan to have this document listed directly on our webpage, so that any citizen, any potential vendor, any current vendor can take a look and see what our business rules are if they want to do business with the city, or if they have a question about someone who is doing business with the city and they wonder what the rules were that they had to follow. We want to have a completely open book here.
Well, and I appreciate it. I think that that's for clarification's purposes. That will help not only vendors, as you said, but citizens also if they come in and have a question on something, there's a place to go to instead of being passed around City Hall, and I think that will help a great deal in the communication and confusion. Thank you.
Thank you.
This purchasing policy is certainly a step forward, should centralize everything, simplify things, clarify, and that's very positive steps.
I like to think it really should help us all sleep a little better at night, knowing that we have a better foundation of rules that are founded upon the law with which to guide how we spend the taxpayers' money. It will be done in the most proper, above-board ethical manner that we can do.
Even though a lot of effort went into this over a period of a year's time, or however long you've been working on this, this is a win-win situation for everybody, for staff, for elected officials, for citizens, for vendors. So, my appreciation to you and to those responsible for bringing this forth at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Any other comments on item number five? Mr. Torres, you have some comments on item number seven?
Actually, not much, Mayor. I mentioned earlier the need for this fee ordinance and what it does, essentially bringing a whole slew of various fees and fines, our permits and license amounts together into one document that we can very easily review annually, and also it gives us an opportunity if a citizen walks in, we can very easily show them what we charge for various things. And I would expect also that this is going to be found on the website also through our code book.
I think that's, yeah, that's an excellent idea, and it would be easy to put this consolidated listing of fees on our website. And I'll just point out, in our earlier meetings at the retreat and earlier this evening, I alluded to the Code of Ordinances and how it's a rather thick and difficult book to look through. This is it, and you can see the number of tabs that are here, and I've been working with this book for a long time, and I'm still challenged to find the right fee or charge or rationale for it in the right place. It is really difficult. Hopefully, now that, we're going to add one more tab, but that tab is going to consolidate all of these fees, so that any one of us and citizens can find them very easily.
Members of the council, any questions or comments regarding item number seven? Again, the job well done, a very much-needed addition to our doing business in a professional manner.
Thank you.
Okay, having completed the consent agenda, we move now to the Vista Citizens Forum. And Ms. Dobbs, we have not received any requests to speak before the council.
No, sir, Mayor, we have none.
Okay, that being the case, we move now to the announcements and events. Councilmember Williams, I believe you have an announcement regarding Spring Fest.
Yes, Mayor, we have Spring Fest coming up Saturday, April the fifth, will begin at eleven a.m. in the morning, and it'll go through four o'clock in the afternoon. This will be at the Haltum Road Park, just south of Broadway, right at the Fossil Creek. We'll have music, we'll have an Easter egg hunt, there'll be an Easter bonnet contest, games, petting zoo, we're going to have food, and the best part about it, the admission is free, so everyone can afford it. So, that's Saturday, April the fifth, and we'll be looking for everybody to come. It's always a well-attended affair.
Thank you very much. Our Parks and Recreation Director, George Fowler, I believe you have an announcement to make the citizens of Haltum City will also be interested in.
Yes, I do. Thank you, Mayor. I just want to let the citizens know and the council know that the recreation center on March twenty-fourth will be closed down for a minimum two-week period. We're hoping to open back up on April the sixth, and then when we open back up, the only thing available will be the gym as it is right now, and the access to the gym will be through the south doors that face Broadway. During the early part of April, they're going to begin demolition of the existing recreation center, so if you're nostalgic and you want to take a picture of it for future, that's time to do it prior to April, because it will no longer be there as we know it now. At the same time, we have youth baseball starting, let's see, this fifteenth, I believe, this Saturday, and then girls softball will start in early April. Access to Broadway Park will be on Jean Lane, or you can go off of Broadway on Katrina and go down to Joy Lee and access that direction. There will not be access through the rec center as there used to be. That area is now cordoned off, it's used for construction only, and there will not be any access through there until such time as the recreation project is complete, and we anticipate that happening in November of this year. Thank you.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes, Mr. Fowler, and I guess for the city secretary as well, with the construction that's going on, I guess it'd be virtually impossible to have any kind of election down there in May. Would that be right?
That's correct.
Yes, so we've made arrangements to move the election to a more suitable place?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to let the citizens know that.
To add a little clarity to that, and thank you for bringing that up, I think it's important for our citizens to know about the election coming up. Ms. Dobbs, you want to tell us a little bit more about, since we can't vote at the rec center, what will happen?
Right, as you know, a couple of weeks ago, this body and agreed that the early voting in the election day will be held at the police storefront, which is off of Denton Highway. Early voting times have been posted, they have been put on the water bills to all the citizens. We're going to be doing another announcement in the Four Star Telegram to let everyone know when the early voting is starting. I am accepting now applications for mail ballots, and the last day of filing for an office is March the nineteenth at five o'clock.
Our city engineer, Mr. Greg Van Uen Hughes, I believe you have an announcement to make regarding Broadway, construction on Broadway.
Good evening. The next public meeting for the Broadway project is next Tuesday. The next public meeting for the Broadway project is next Tuesday, March the 18th. That'll be at 6:00 in this room here, council chambers. I'd invite all the businesses to attend, and any interested citizens. At that time, we'll be talking about what we can do to help the businesses, and where we are in the construction schedule, and what's coming up next. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Fowler?
Mr. Van Nuunhuis, if you have just a second. First of all, I know y'all probably caught quite a bit of grief along the Broadway, but I was just going to tell y'all that the side that's opened, on the north side of Broadway, is very nice, and glad y'all have taken time to do it and watch over it properly for the citizens. When that road's completed, it's going to be first-class. Can you give me a quick update on the paving portion on the opposite side, or when an estimated time of completion is?
The estimated time for completion, and we ask that of the contractor every public meeting, and he's been telling us late summer, early fall, and I think that's obtainable. What you see right now is a phase that wasn't in the original plans, but the contractor was able to do that. I think there's a benefit to the citizens to be able to use the paving, instead of doing all one side. So what we're looking at doing is, the next phase will be the environmental remediation at Beach Street. If you remember, they did the north side, and then paved over it. They're going to have to do the environmental remediation, that's coming up next. At that same time, they're still working on paving, doing the subgrade work, the asphalt and the steel for the paving from Gene Lane all the way to Haltam Road. On the east side of Haltam Road, they still have quite a bit of utility work to do, basically the storm sewer and the sanitary sewer. So, once he gets the environmental remediation done at Beach Street, he'll start, hopefully, doing the paving on that side as well. So what this contractor's trying to do, he's got about two or three crews out at the same time, in an effort to get this project open as soon as possible.
So for, I guess, layman's terms, y'all are going to continue moving to the east?
Correct, on the north side.
On the north side of the road, up to Broadway, and then as well as continuing to do the demolition, and start back again on the west end, coming to the east?
Right, I think his primary focus, the north side will always stay ahead of the south side.
Correct.
And that's just the way the utilities worked out, right.
Okay, and then for the citizens' information, this portion of it, assuming, though, we're coming into our rainy season, but this portion should move a little quicker, just due to the fact that you've done most of your utility work now from Broadway West, so the other side, the south side of Broadway, should move fairly quickly.
It should. Nothing on Carson went smoother quickly, but relatively speaking, the paving portion went a lot faster than the utility portion. I would estimate the utility portion on Broadway being 75% to 80% complete. So once the utility portion is 100% complete, I think that paving will go pretty quickly. On the south side of the street, he also has sidewalks, so it's not going to go as fast as the north side, but when he strictly has concrete work, both contractors seem to be more adept at doing that, it seems to be going a lot faster.
I know it's been a hindrance on our businesses along that, and it's been a hindrance on the citizens trying to travel up and down Broadway, but if anyone hasn't done it yet, if you take the time to travel, that portion of Broadway that's already been completed, it's a far cry better than anything that's ever been there, and I want to thank y'all, and thank for y'all's hard work, and I know the portions of our utility and public works department that has spent time on it, engineering, and everyone's been involved, and thank y'all so much, because it's so much nicer now.
Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. And finally, from our Economic Development Department, one of our newest employees on staff, Kelly Sims, you have something for us, I believe, you have an announcement to And you might introduce yourself. I kind of half-heartedly introduced you, you deserve more of an introduction than that, so tell us, and the citizens, who you are, and how long you've been with us, and what you're doing here, and then the good information you have for us tonight.
All right, my name is Kelly Sims, I'm with the Economic Development Department. I'm the Business Development Coordinator. I've been working for about four weeks now, and I have put together a newsletter for the Economic Development Corporation, and it shows a showcase of our new businesses. It also has relevant current events, close-ups on certain areas, and coming attractions. We want to be able to promote the city, to businesses, to help the existing ones succeed, to also help draw in new businesses to the city. We want everybody to know what's going on here in the city, and that it's a great place to be, great place to have your business. And this is actually a draft, and we will be coming out with a more professional-looking version in the future, a slick version, and we will try to get together a mailing list to mail out, depending on how many we can afford to do.
Members, yes, Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Thank you. Thanks for that report, Ms. Sims. I was wondering, it says here that you have a lot of background in geographic information center, which we refer to as GIS. Mr. Polisca has used that very indepthly in the last year or so. Do you see using that in your job here, applying that?
Yes, definitely. We basically have talked about, I can give you two examples of what we're planning on doing with GIS, Geographic Information Systems. What we're planning on doing with that is, in the newsletter, I cover that the commercial buildings, building permits are up for 2003, and also that the value is up, and also certificates of occupancy are up. And what we're planning on doing is getting some maps together for the actual finalized newsletter that will be released, to show exactly where the businesses are coming up across the city, and be able to pinpoint where the development is, and to show that it's all over the city, as opposed to just in certain areas, and that we are working on different fronts of retail, and multifamily housing, and areas like that. And you can see it visually, and know we're doing something here, and something has really been accomplished over the last year.
I know this letter will probably be used locally, and probably state, do you have any intention of maybe producing this and promoting it nationally?
Yes. What we're planning on doing is, through the Quad Cities DFW Foundation, we'll be attending trade shows, and the city will be able to be promoted at a national, international level. They are working with going to the International Shopping Center Conference in Las Vegas right now, and when we get the finalized copy of this together, we'll be sending that with them as well.
And one last thing, the upcoming Kmart store that's going to close, and the recent closing of the Winn-Dixie store, can you tell us, y'all are working very vigorously toward filling those two facilities with lack businesses?
Well, definitely. I know on my end, what I am, will be pursuing in the future, is also using GIS technology in that case. I have some experience in retail site selection, and I believe that I'll be able to bring with that, and with the director, Kemp Flynn's development background, we'll be able to try to pinpoint different businesses that will be best suited for those buildings.
I think it's been quite a challenge for you, and I'm looking forward to working with you, and I'm looking forward to get those empty buildings built up, so thanks for your work.
Thank you.
Further questions or comments for Kelly, members of council? Mr. Torres, any comment you'd like to make on any of these announcements that have been made? Okay, we move now to item number nine, a discussion of the Union Pacific Railroad Crossing, and I believe our city engineer, did you want to make comments to introduce that?
I guess, as many, turn my mic on, as many of us know who travel Haltam Road to the north, where they cross the Union Pacific Railway, and Meacham, where it crosses there in the same general area, seems like the whole time I've been in Haltam City, those railroad crossings have been horrendous, and they've gotten progressively worse, believe it or not. And the city has received many, many complaints about this, and what many people don't understand is, it's not something that the city of Haltam City has ultimate control over. We have a relationship with the Union Pacific and other railroads, but we don't control them, and we can't regulate and tell them what to do and how to do it. It's very frustrating, but yet, when a complaint comes in about railroad crossings, you know, they're typically funneled through the city. So what we've been doing lately through Greg's office is to try to heighten the awareness of our problem with the Union Pacific through some correspondence, and recently, the council's got involved in this, because we're all reaching, peaking with frustration about what we can do to get these improvements made. So I'll just turn it over to you, Greg, you can discuss a little bit about, you know, some of your communication with them, and then we've got to share some things with it.
In your package, you have a copy of a letter that I sent approximately three weeks ago, and since that time of the letter, we did, I don't know that we got the road off of High Center, but we got a commitment from them to fit it, to repair both the Haltam Road and the McLean Road Crossing. And however, that timeframe doesn't, I'm sure doesn't meet with anything that we had in mind. And just so everyone realizes what that timeframe is, they had committed to properly repairing Haltam Road by the end of this month, March. The asphalt that was just put there late last week was just temporary, and I don't even know how much of that is left today, just three days later. But their commitment was to properly fix Haltam Road by the end of March, and then McLean Road in the next quarter, which is by the end of June. And that timeframe, as I said, I'm sure doesn't sit well with any of us, so would like to take the next step, and perhaps, you know, a letter drafted by my office or the city manager's office, and maybe signed by the council and the mayor, maybe that would get them to speed up that process even better. Presently, the gentleman that I'm dealing with is Mr. Mike Haverstick, and while he's told me this verbally, the timeframes that I had mentioned, I have expressed to him that those timeframes are unacceptable, and would like him to put a better timeframe, come up with a better timeframe, commit it to writing, and send it to us. Since we've had that discussion, I have not heard from Mr. Haverstick. But that's where I am at this point. What I'd like to do is, you know, if there's some specific issues, statements that the council would like made in the letter drafted by either my office or the city manager's office, now's the time I'd like to hear them, so that we can get that drafted, perhaps get your signatures as soon as tomorrow, Wednesday.
Councilmember Williams, I believe your light was on first, and then Councilmember Jennings.
Thank you. Mr. Van Nuunhuis, I don't know if the people are watching via TV, you know, but we've got big 52-inch screen TVs here, condensing about 8-inch screen. There's supposed to be a phone number flashed across there, and the phone number is the gentleman that we need to contact, and not only is the council, I see they just put it on here. It's too little, I have to get one of the younger councilmembers to read it for me.
They're going to flash it.
But it's on there. But this will be put on there, not only on this council, but I understand we're going to put it on our feed through the cable, and it would be nice if anyone that sees this number, call this gentleman, and if you go up and down Haltam Road, cross that track, or cross McLean there, it'd be nice to call this gentleman. I'm not really sure that he knows how rough this track is. These councilmembers have got quite a few calls on it, and I would like to share some of my calls with him. So this number down here at the bottom of your screen here that you see on TV, feel free to call. Call often. And we're going to do everything we can to get that track where it's passable. And I just urge the citizens that when they cross these tracks, that they might slow down, because they are quite rough right now.
Right, it's unfortunate that it's come to this, but I think the city manager, as he said, you know, our frustration has had a peak, and we don't really have, not we don't really have, we have no control over their tracks, short of pulling up their tracks, which we can't do, and I'm sure if we tried, they'd get a court order against us. I think that might be the only thing that they might understand, and I would too encourage those people at home that are watching tonight, during the week, to call that number, and let the railroad understand our sense of frustration.
Anything further, Councilmember Williams?
I like what keeps the gentleman quite busy.
Councilmember Jennings?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I'd like to thank Greg for your cooperation in this. Certainly, the thing foremost in my mind here is that this is a safety concern. It is a situation to where city vehicles pass over this numerous times per day, and the wear and tear on our city vehicles is immense, the wear and tear on the vehicles of our citizens is immense, the chances for accidents in that area is very high, based on people, some people come to a stop, some people go over it at 30 or 40 miles an hour, like John said. It's just a bad situation, and I think the thing that's paramount here to remember is that this is not controlled by the city of Haltam City. This is a Union Pacific situation. We have no control whatsoever, the only thing that we can do is urge them to fix these tracks. I, for one, do not have a problem with them fixing the one in Haltam Road, and having it done by the end of the month. Having one is better than having none, but I do not feel comfortable about waiting 90 more days to get the one in McLean. And for those of you out there watching on HCTV, the one at McLean is the one by the middle school, that runs over toward the industrial area over there, and it is probably used as much traffic-wise as the one in Haltam Road, just at different times. In the mornings and any afternoons during the school week, traffic backs up all the way down to Haltam Road at that red light, all the way down McLean, past the water towers there, people trying to, you know, get across there and get their kids to school and get them back. So I would urge this council to draft some form of letter, or to sign some form of letter drafted by your office, and as a group, 100% as a group, I'd like to see assign this to the mayor and the council. I would like to see a copy of it sent to the Union Pacific. I would also like to see a copy of it go to our state representative in Austin, and certainly if the media would be interested in it, I'd like for them to have a copy of it. I noticed while we were talking here that David Soriano was kind enough to put up an address. If you can't get ahold of the gentleman by phone, there was a address in Spring, Texas there, that just came back up on your screen. I urge you to write to that address and express your concern. This is a problem for our businesses, as well as our citizens, people that are coming off the freeway and attempting to go to the box company back there on the corner of McLean and Haltam Road. It's a mess, and it's a mess for, if in fact the Winn-Dixie store was opened up there, it would really have an effect on their business. It has an adverse effect on us attracting new businesses to this area. So this is an important situation, and I, for one, just couldn't wait for 90 days to 120 days for them to get off High Center here, and if we were blocking their tracks for five minutes, they'd be squealing like stuck pigs. They're blocking our streets here, and they're doing it every day, and I think it's incumbent upon us to do something about it. So I urge everyone to call this number, do what we have to do to get these crossings fixed. They've got the material sitting there to fix them, it's been stacked there for months on end. If you drive by there and look off to the right there, you'll see it stacked up there, but it's awful hard to drive on it when it's over there. Doesn't do us any good. Came in and did a little patch job, that was really nice for about three days, and, you know, the ice came in there, and, you know, I will give them this, had the ice problem not occurred, you probably wouldn't have got the asphalt breaking up quite as quick as it did, but, you know, that's mother nature there, and we don't have any control. So I urge everyone to call the numbers, urge everyone on the council to sign a letter, let's send them to the places that they need to be sent, and see if we can't get our citizens some relief here. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Markham?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to go back just a little bit further than what we've gone tonight, something probably our city manager does not know. I recall about, time flies as you get older, two years ago, two and a half years ago, this council, I remember you up there with a chainsaw, cutting limbs that people have thrown out, cutting chairs apart that people have thrown out in the high grass. We had the city, Public Works, had their grate all out there, and we had volunteers from this council, volunteers from the city, and public workpeople up there all day at one Saturday, and cleaned out that right away from McLean to Haltam Road, and cleaned it out to resolve the mosquito problem, to resolve the debris problem. So their disregard for the railroad crossing goes back further than just this crossing. To me, it's a complete disregard for our city. And I think tomorrow, this gentleman's number may light up. number may light up, and I think it is time that we go forward, do whatever we need to do to grease the wheel and get some things done. Thank you, Mayor.
Uh, before Councilmember Williams speaks a second time on this subject, I want to make just a brief comment. Uh, one day last week, uh, Mr. Torres and I had an opportunity to meet with the representative from, uh, Representative Kay Granger's office, and, uh, it is correct that, uh, this is not a Haltem City issue as far as us finding a resolution to it within the city of Haltem City, it's really not even a county or a state. The federal government actually has more control over railroads and what they can do and what they can't do, and we did get Marcia Menace to agree, and she's the representative from state, uh, from, uh, our, uh, Representative Kay Granger's office. We did get her to agree to drive up Haltem Road, drive across that, and then convey to, uh, Representative Granger our concern about the condition that we believe was unacceptable. So with all of what has been said so far tonight, uh, in, including this, perhaps we can, uh, can get this addressed, but I do want our citizens to know that, uh, that's not acceptable. Those two crossings are not acceptable and, uh, that we are making an effort to, uh, to get those addressed. Councilmember Williams?
Thank you, Mayor. One other item, and, uh, that was brought up in, uh, pre-council, I don't see Mr. Eklund, Ray Eklund was here earlier, he brought up an item, uh, not everybody watches cable TV, uh, not everybody has that capability. Uh, I'm sure that the, uh, I know the Stark Telegram reporter's here tonight, I'm sure something will be written in Stark Telegram, and that number will be added to it, but Mr. Eklund had also suggested that maybe we make use of one of our portable signs that we have, and it'd be very nice to put up there, one, warning of the rough track, and two, have this gentleman's name and phone number on it, and that way everybody that goes by there will be able to have an opportunity to get his number, so if we could get Public Works or whoever, uh, Mr. City Manager, I don't know who's in charge of, uh, that sign.
We're gonna take care of it.
It'd be nice to get that up there, and, uh, I'd like for everybody to have his number.
Uh, Councilmember Williams, uh, okay, your light, come back on. Councilmember Jennings?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Excuse me, at this time, if, uh, I, I don't believe it would be necessary for us to take formal action and vote on this, I think probably a staff directive, taking into consideration everything that we said tonight, would probably suffice if the council feels good with that. Uh, if not, then I would be prepared to make a motion if you deem one necessary.
Uh, Mr. Torres, uh, do we need a motion to get things moved forward here on this item?
I really don't think so, Mayor. I think we're, we're, we'll have a letter drafted for y'all's signature tomorrow. Um, sign's gonna take a couple more days to put together, but our shop can make these, so I, I, I think what we're doing tonight is gonna make a difference.
Uh, Mr. Olson, there's no need for us to take action on, on this item number nine, is that correct?
There is no need.
Okay. Uh, that being?
Excuse me?
Yes, please.
Richard, you had mentioned making some signs. Uh, we, we were talking about, I understood we were talking about like a four-by-four?
Four-by-four.
That we, that we already have, that's available?
Yeah.
It's like a portable sign?
Uh, I wasn't taking portable sign, I was taking, uh, and we've got signs in-house with our sign-making equipment, we'll put the letters on it.
Okay.
At, at both of those, uh, track crossings.
I, I, I know people are gonna have to slow down, slow enough to read them, because there's no way they're gonna get by there, uh, and with any speed at all, so I'm just concerned about the size and them being able to read the, the letters on it.
You want large, is what you say.
Well, I'd like to see this, I'd like to see the phone number for people to call. If, if we had a portable sign, we could park there for a few days, I think that would, you know, that would get a job done.
Well, we do have two portable signs.
Exactly, I was just gonna mention that. I use those all the time on Broadway.
Right.
And, or other construction projects.
And I think we've already got those, and that could be something we could do almost instantly.
We could have those up tomorrow, and then if we wanted something a little bit more permanent, I'm sure it takes a couple of days to make the signs on the four-by-four.
The thing that I caution you on is the placement of those signs. You certainly aren't gonna be able to place those on railroad property, but I understand one of the citizens there on the corner of Haltem Road, uh, and that railroad crossing would, would certainly be interested in, in letting you put one there, and I'm sure that there's someplace up there close, uh, one of the businesses possibly there on McLean would, would maybe entertain thoughts of that, so just had to check into that.
Anything else, Councilmember Jennings? Councilmember Hurley, and then Councilmember Williams?
We're talking about putting signs up for McLean and Haltem Road? Yes. Both directions?
Right.
Fine.
Uh, Councilmember Williams?
If I could get Mr. Soriano to put that number up one more time, uh, we've told everybody via cable about this, we had not told anyone in this audience what number. Thank you, David. It's 817-878-4671 for those who are in the audience. 817-878-4671, and his name is Mike Havestick?
That's correct.
H-A-V-E-R-S-T-I-C-K, so that way everyone here in the audience, I'm sorry to interrupt again, but people here in the audience didn't get the number.
I understand that we want this also posted on both our website and HCTV during the regular scrolling.
Anything further on, uh, on this item, item number nine? Thank you, Greg. Uh, with the action being taken, now we ought to get a, a nuisance taken care of, move forward on, uh, abating that nuisance. Uh, moving to item number 10, any resignations, uh, of board members? There being none, item number 11 is the appointment and the reappointment. Councilmember Markham?
Thank you, Mayor. For the last, I don't know, six, eight, 10 months, we've had a consistent visitor in our council meetings. He's been here, uh, every time we've had a council meeting. So he's had a bright smiling face and a positive attitude, Mr. Bill Nickel. It's my pleasure to, uh, appoint him to place seven on the planning and zoning board, and I would ask the council's ratification, please.
Okay, will you register your intent regarding ratification of Mr. Nickel, and that passes by unanimous vote? Item number 12 is a moot issue. It has to do with attendance requirements, all of us are present and accounted for. With all of the items posted on the agenda having been addressed, the council will move now into closed session pursuant to section 551.071 and .072, and will return to open session to take action on any items, uh, that action's required on. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, the council has reconvened in open session at, uh, five minutes till 10:00. Uh, we have one item to take action on, uh, that was discussed in executive session, and I'm in line for motion regarding that issue. Uh, Councilmember Hurley?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the council authorize the city manager to settle a lawsuit with Wilder at no cost to the city.
Uh, Councilmember Jennings?
For a second?
Have a motion, a second, any discussion on that motion?
At absolutely no cost to the city.
Right.
If you will, uh, register your vote, and that passes by unanimous vote. With that having been taken care of, no further business for the council, we stand adjourned.